Thank you, Stu. All right. Good evening. We'll go ahead and start the August 23 meeting of Temecula City Council. Let's see, today we have an invocation by Pastor Rick Malik of Temecula Methodist Church, and our flag salute, if we could, this evening be led by our own Mary Ann Edwards. Evening.
Before we pray, I want to thank the city council for this invitation to share, and I hope that the brief invocation will set a tone of wisdom and openness to the agenda before you this evening. Let us pray. Creator God, we thank you for this day you have blessed us with. We thank you for those who have been chosen to lead this city and their care and compassion for the people who find their home here in Temecula. We ask you to watch over all who have gathered this evening as they offer input and hopes for a community where all can live that is safe, a place where all who live, young and old, can thrive for the betterment of the city and all people who live in this community. Help all who bring business, insights, and hopes to offer words of compassion, care, and support. May we all listen with ears of understanding and respond in peace. We ask this and pray this to the one who gives us love and grace. Amen.
Amen. Would you please join me in our pledge of allegiance? And as we do that, could you remember that we, every single day, have men and women around the world defending our freedom? And so that's why we can remain free in this country. So please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. All right, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Alexandria is absent. Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Mayor Ron?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Schwank?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
All right, we have no presentations this morning, or this evening, sorry. Board and Commissioner reports. Let's start with the Planning Commission this evening. Mr. Watts, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. Caught me on guard here. So there's your Planning Commission. I will not read that for you all. The Planning Commission, on our last meeting, approved a development plan for an approximately 18,630 square foot building totaling three stories to be located at 28500 Old Town Front Street. There were no public speakers for the item, and the Planning Commission voted four to zero to approve the application. Next slide, and that should probably do it. That building could be used for restaurants or offices, retail, and that type of thing. So it'll be a nice addition to Old Town, and for those that don't know, it's right across the street, directly east from Mad Madeline's.
Perfect. Thank you for the work. And we have Denise here with the Ready Commission. Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, commissioners, and guests. The Ready Commission is made up of seven residents. Commissioner Adam Eventhal, Commissioner Faulkner, Commissioner Lyman, Commissioner Crystal Pastorian, Commissioner Jackie Steed, and myself. We serve together as an advisory group to the city council. We make recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion within the city events, services, programs, and policies, and enhance community relations. Our last meeting was August the 11th, and we had a presentation by the Riverside Sheriff's Office, also known as RSO. The commission received a presentation by Lieutenant Craig Roberts regarding the special needs reunification program. The program is designed to reunify displaced individuals with diagnosis and conditions with their families through a special registry. Now, this registry notes important traits and characteristics of the displaced person to ensure that the Riverside Sheriff's Office has access to that information prior to making contact with the displaced person. The Riverside Sheriff's Office is raising awareness of this program so that those who wish to sign up for the registry can do so. The commissioners asked several questions about the program, the participants' requirement, the community responsiveness, and how they can help bring about awareness in our community. Additional information about the program and the registry can be found on their website, Riverside Sheriff's Office. And Lieutenant Roberts also shared a heartwarming video with us about how they can quickly get another, how they can quickly find the loved one that has been lost. So that's something that you're going to see a lot more information about. This registry is something that's going to be really good for our community. And lastly, our next commission meeting is on Thursday, September the 8th, at 6:00 PM, right here in this room, and we invite you all to attend or by YouTube channel, and that completes my report.
All right, thank you so much. All right, do we have any public comments? Oh, sorry, oops, gonna skip over Captain Hall there. Sorry about that. Public safety report.
Evening, sir. My report this evening will be short, just the calls for service. Year-to-date, 2022, 45,924 versus 49,105. Month of July, you can see 2022, 6230 to 2121, or to 2021, 7152. A special note tonight, Lieutenant Mark Regali will be promoted to captain and obtaining his own command at the Hemet Station. Hemet Station has about an 800-mile geographical area they cover. His station will also be responsible for the cities of San Jacinto, as well as the mountain station on the hill there. Regali has been great, will certainly be missed, and is the greatest lieutenant I've ever worked with.
Aww.
That's all I got.
All right. Well, needless to say, I know with a lot of folks, I just want to say disappointed that Lieutenant Regali is leaving, but congratulations anyway. If you want to come down to the microphone so we can yell at you for a couple minutes, that'd be great. No, really, congratulations. You've been a remarkable asset to the city. You know, one of the, well, the best lieutenant I've ever worked with, too, so there. But really, it's just been an outstanding pleasure to have you here as part of our community, and wanted to thank you so much for your service. But also, tell us a little bit about what you're up to next in Hemet Station.
Oh, I don't know yet. I'm gonna find out when I land there as Captain Hall. First of all, God, thank you, Captain Hall. It's been a pleasure working with you and all your support and your management style and allowing us to, you know, be able to work in confidence and be able to deliver the best, you know, service possible to the city and to the other areas that we're responsible for. Hemet is a big station, a big geographic area, managing the contract for City of San Jacinto, four Indian tribes that we provide law enforcement services to there. Luckily, I have some history with that, so I think I'm well-fitted for that. And the mountain station, and I think a lot of search and rescue stuff that goes on. Fortunately, we have the helicopter and equipment for that, I think, you know, that will keep us busy. And I really don't know yet. I have been fully entrenched here, and I will tell you that I have really, really enjoyed my last two years here. I love this city. I love this station. It is bittersweet, for sure. I am grateful and honored that the sheriff has given me this opportunity, but I will tell you that I leave this city and station behind. A little sad, because I really have enjoyed working with all of you. So I live here locally, so I'm not going away. I will still pop in here and there, and I will just throw it out to all of you. You have my number and my email, and please keep in touch. And if there is anything I can do for you, please do not hesitate to contact me. I am happy to help you anytime that I can. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Keep in mind, he'll still be doing a majority of my work. But from the Hemet Station.
Wonderful. All right. Okay, now moving on to public comments, non-agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, we just have one public comment on non-agendized items, and it is from Eric Schaefer.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me here. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in a public forum to our city. I am the president of Temecula League. My name is Eric Schaefer. I come before you to discuss kind of the way that we are allotted field space and how the players are considered and what is used in the equation. The definition of residence is really what I'm after to seek to have kind of re-looked at and maybe, you know, looked at a different light. Currently, under policy 0401, as last revised in 2013, the 80-20% rule versus residents versus non-residents is the equation utilized. Essentially, this, under this policy, I see it that the players and the league are somewhat punished in the amount of space that is allocated to the players and the league itself. It allows less of an opportunity for somewhat of the limited space per season that we're allotted. Temecula League has been chartered with Little League International since 1980. The boundaries are determined basically by what school the players go to and what zip code they live in. And the intent is to, with that in mind, the school district and the zip codes, the intent of the players to become, or have the opportunity to play with their friends, their neighborhood friends, and have the opportunity to play baseball together in a close-knit community. Community strength is International's number-one goal, and Temecula League follows that as best we possibly can. So of last season's spring numbers, we had 1,000 players registered. More than 90% of those players actually did live in Temecula postal codes. However, we were struck down to 78% because those players are considered out of city residents. So I asked that, you know, we take a look at the Morgan Hills, the Glen Oaks, the DeLuces, if they're Temecula addresses under the USPS codes. We consider them to be residents, because it's really just punishing the players in the league itself. I have a couple attachments. I won't touch on everything. A couple attachments that I brought for you guys to review. If you wouldn't mind, please take a look at those when you get a moment. It goes over the city map versus what is allocated or generated by Little League International as to what our boundaries are and who players we are allowed to have in our league to represent us. I see a lot of these individuals being residents, not non-residents. I do also have some solutions in there. We're willing to pay the $10 fee. We don't mind paying that fee. We just want a reconsideration of how those individuals are considered. So I want to thank you, appreciate the time. I thank you, Mary Ann, for doing the National Anthem at the league opening, and that was great. Stu, you cut my hair. I appreciate it. I wore the hat. I'm a baseball player, so I gotta wear the hat. So thank you. My time's up. I appreciate it. And if you guys can review, I'd really appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate the info.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Mayor, that was the one and only speaker.
Okay, thank you. All right, city council reports. Do we have any this evening? All right, seeing none. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Item number one, approve action minutes of August 9, 2022. Item number two, waive reading of standard ordinances resolutions. Item number three, approve list of demands. Four, approve city treasurer's report as of April 30, 2022, and May 31, 2022. Five, amend the capital improvement program for fiscal years '23 through '27 for various projects. Item number six, adopt resolution acknowledging receipt of the annual inspection report pursuant to SB 1205. Item number eight, approve, or seven, approve resolution related to the annexation of territory to the Temecula Public Financing Authority Community Facilities District, number 16-01, Aurora Paw Ranch Phase 2, and prospective issuance of special tax bonds. Item number eight, approve applications for highway safety improvement programs, cycle 11 funding through Caltrans Division of Local Assistance for various citywide traffic safety improvement projects. Nine, approve agreement for consultant services with TY Lynn International for the I-15 French Valley Parkway improvements, Phase 2, PW 16-01. Item number 10, approve amendment to the agreement with MDG Associates, Inc. for community development block grant administration services. Eleven, approve second amendment to the agreement with STC Traffic, Inc. for on-call traffic engineering services. Item number 12, approve plans and specifications and authorize the solicitation of construction bids for recycled water accelerated retrofit program, Project PW 21-04. Item number 13, accept improvements and file notice of completion for the flood control reconstruction and repair project, PW 11-10. Item 14, accept improvements and file notice of completion for Mary Phillips Senior Center Emergency Generator, PW 21-08. Item number 15, accept improvements and file notice of completion for the infill mini pump track at Wolf Creek Park, PW 21-05. And lastly, item number 16, receive and file temporary street closures for the 2022 Autumn Fest events.
Move approval.
I will second, but I would also like to get a brief staff report on number five. But I'm good with it. I don't need to pull it to vote on it, so.
Okay. I got a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And that passes four to zero with one member absent. Can we get a staff report on number five, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Item five on the consent calendar is a total of seven different capital improvement projects that require city council approval as we're moving money in between accounts. Circumstances have changed, and that is what we're asking tonight in terms of the dollars being moved from one project to another. But I think what councilmember Stewart really wanted me to focus on was one particular project, which is under the city facility rehab account. And the staff recommendation this evening is to appropriate $250,000 for tenant improvements to the police station in Old Town. Now, just a quick background on this. It was probably over 15 years ago when the concept of building a city hall in Old Town emerged, and we began the design process, and the foresight was there to include not just a parking garage, a visitor center, but also a police storefront. And fortunately, for us, that build-out occurred, and that police storefront has really served the city well. It's served our deputies well over the last decade, but things have changed. And in the last 12 years, community policing has changed. Old Town has changed, which necessitated tonight's item, which leads us to the space and the tenant improvements that are needed to be invested in the Old Town Police Station. And we're excited about this. There's a lot that goes into this investment in the police station beyond just walls and furniture and FFNEs. We actually have stood up an amazing metro team that's bolstering our downtown. We're standing up a new special team called the Core Team. But to expand upon both of these human resource assets as community policing has changed in our community, I'd like to ask Captain Hall to kind of talk a little bit more about what exactly we should expect to see coming out of the Old Town Police Station, the efficiencies that are created, and the number of deputies that are actually going to be deployed from not just this storefront, but also the second floor of City Hall. So I'll turn it over to Captain Hall.
Thank you, sir. Well, over the last year, we've talked a lot about resource deployment, right? And we've talked about the data and what drives, how many deputies were, and what we do with them, and the need. And we saw that we needed a metro team, right? Dedicated force to work down here in the Old Town area. We started out with two deputies that were the Old Town Business Liaison District deputies. That was met with very positive results. Everybody down here really liked it. Visitors liked it. Residents liked it. The business owners liked it. The staff at the establishments liked it, and then it kind of grew from there, not only because the reviews were so positive, but because it became so busy. And it necessitated more deputies deployed down here more often. So in talks with city management, with you, we developed and deployed the Old Town Metro Team. And so that's a dedicated 10-man team that is dedicated to just, as we say, arch to arch, right? Now, from time to time, they go out of that area, but the most part, they're always down here. Well, as we continue to look at how do we make that more efficient? How does that better serve the people down here? We realized that geographically, it was a little undesirable to have them out of the Southwest Station when they did all their work in this space. So in talks with city management team, we decided to have them start and stop their day here in Old Town and deploy from the Old Town City Hall storefront. And so now, with a rebuild, we will set up office space for them there. That is a diversion from how the Sheriff's Department generally operates and how we deploy resources, and is a little scary from a commander, right? Because it does stretch out oversight, and that's Lieutenant Mark Regali was instrumental in planning that and helping work through the bugs. And we will have a lieutenant assigned here a lot of the time now. And that makes me feel better, and I sleep better at night, knowing that there's some management oversight. Even though I trust the deputies, I trust the supervisors, it's just nice to have somebody kind of watching over that all the time. So in doing that, we had to build up the infrastructure down there, right? It requires an armory. It requires office space. It requires changing rooms. It requires secured parking for the vehicles, upgrading the radio infrastructure here, technical infrastructure. The city siloed up from a tech standpoint. The Sheriff's Department siloed up. We had to make those systems communicate. So it took all that. And in a relatively short amount of time, with everybody realizing what the goal was and everybody agreeing that that was something we wanted to do, we were able to cut through the red tape and the bureaucracy and just get it done, which is great. And so here, within, I don't know, 60 to 90 days, the metro team will deploy out of the Old Town City Hall storefront every day, starting and stopping their days there. This will be the place they live. Also, in the build, will be a command post for us. So when we have like the rod run show and shine, things in Old Town, we don't have to bring out the motorhome. We don't have to set up an EZ up in the street. We'll have all our stuff, our city cameras, all access to our technology, bathrooms, everything built right in down here, which is perfect, because it goes in line with what we're doing down here. On top of that, we talked about, well, we need to do better in the quality-of-life space, right? Things that plague our residents but aren't necessarily criminal in nature, and we can't solve in one shift or with one deputy. We need a project management team to go out there and work quality-of-life issues and to work with other city departments, like, you know, building and permits and fire and the inspectors and code enforcement, and all these things that they're normally trying to set up an appointment or trying to get into our patrol deputy's time when they're really hooked to a radio. So they're like, yeah, I'll meet you there at 10, I guess, unless something comes up. Where they're like, well, what about next Tuesday? Well, I have no idea what I'm gonna be doing next Tuesday at 10, because the radio drives what I do. And so we thought, we'll take this Core Team, we'll redeploy some resources, we'll put a four-deputy, one CSO, one sergeant team together, and we'll house them in the center of City Hall, where all of these other entities they work with don't have to try to get on the radio. They don't have to call dispatch. They don't have to call Jen, or they don't have to call a lieutenant or a sergeant. They can just go right to the team, because they're housed right there. They'll know who they are. They'll spend time in City Hall. They'll exchange cellphone numbers. Everybody will know everybody, and it'll make for a much easier and more symbiotic working relationship. And I think that's the start to the future of how we're going to deploy our resources here. And a lot of this was based on a lot of feedback I received from you on the council, what you wanted to see done different. Can we do things better? And it really sent us to the drawing board to sit down and go, hey, is there a better way? Not just the way we've always done it, and we're certainly not in the business of saying no, so let's say yes, and let's just figure it out. I mean, we sat down, we're like, hey, is it good for the city? Yeah, is it good for the customers? It's good for the resident? It's good for the employee? It's good for the organization? Well, then why would we ever say no, right? And so we just decided to say, okay, well, we're gonna figure it out. And this is the first step to putting all this into play. I would say probably within the next couple weeks, Core will set up shop in City Hall, and then shortly after that, within the next couple months, Metro will move in. And so that's pretty much it.
Fantastic.
Yeah, so go over the deputies that are gonna be assigned to us basically as our liaison to the department.
Well, okay, so part, this goes back to like my quality-of-life policing days in Reno Valley a decade or so ago. We would take a city, and we would say, how many quality-of-life deputies do we have? Well, we have four, or we have five, or eight, or whatever. And we would take the city and cut it into zones. And here we have districts. They're pretty much already set up. And each one of these zones would have a city council member assigned. We would assign that deputy to that zone and therefore become a liaison between the Sheriff's Department, the city, the council member, and the residents, and created a much more free-flowing information, right? You don't have to call somebody in the city management team, that then calls me, then I call lieutenant, the lieutenant calls a sergeant, sergeant calls a corporal, corporal calls a deputy, deputy talks about it, and then that information flows back up the chain. And it always changes, right? It's like the game of telephone. We try to get it right, but there's always something we miss. So then we leave with the information we think we have. We try to come up with a reasonable solution, and a lot of times, people are like, well, why'd you do that? That's not even what I wanted. And you're like, well, by the time I heard it, this is what I heard. So by doing that, it kind of gives you, city council members, a one-stop-shop connection to the Sheriff's Department, where you can talk with the deputy. They can understand exactly what you want, provide you progress updates. And if you think it's going off track of what you wanted, you tell them, and they get it back on track. There's a sergeant right there to help manage that. Lieutenant will be right there. And I think it will take some of, and I'm not, I don't know this for certain, but I have been doing this a while, some of the frustration out of that chain of communication that sometimes plagues our organization. And hopefully, we can cut through a lot of that. And this will just streamline everything. And ultimately, at the end of the day, we provide a better service to you, and we provide a better service to our residents, and we have much happier customers. And our employees are less frustrated, right? So that's the goal.
Councilmember Stewart, one final thing I'll add. It would be my desire to, in the near future, once we get, you know, these special teams stood up and operational, we invite them both to a council meeting just like tonight. You know, let's get all 18, 19 folks here. We'll introduce them to the community one by one and continue to promote this investment, promote these resources, promote the services that are going on. So look for that in the next, hopefully, next month as well.
Okay, so I'm super excited about this. I've been a big proponent of getting our officers here inside our city limits. And so this program that they set up is, I love it. I mean, it's brilliant. I think going forward, it'll give us a, just a better look at what that looks like having our officers here in town. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
The thing that's so positive about this is it takes real estate that we already own and just expands it. So for a fraction of what it would cost us to build something separate and off-site, I mean, $250,000 to get all this person power here at City Hall and to, you know, improve coordination and communication, and also, it's going to help council members directly with their districts, with our districts. Because, you know, I've called Regali so many times, you know, and he's not assigned to any district in particular, but he's always been wonderful to answer and follow up and has done some amazing things for the residents of Temecula. So this is really the best of both worlds, and we have it right here, you know, right here in-house and in the police storefront.
And feel free to continue calling him.
Yeah. Oh, I thought I might.
Well, perfect. I mean, just another great example of the partnership we have with the Sheriff's Department. Thank you all for working with us on that and bringing a great resource into Old Town and City Hall.
Sure.
All right. All right, so that closes out the consent calendar. I'm going to recess the meeting to Temecula Community Services.
All right, so I'll begin the Temecula Community Service District meeting. Madam Secretary, please know we're all still here. Are there any public comments? All right, so we're on to the consent calendar. Approve action minutes of August 9, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Please vote. All right, that passes four to zero. Director report.
No report this evening. I just wanted to extend to...
I just wanted to extend to Lieutenant Regali on behalf of the Community Services Department our congratulations at his new appointment and our sadness that you were leaving because Lieutenant Regali's competence and integrity are without parallel, and he has been an absolute pleasure for us to work with over the past two years. So, thank you for everything.
All right, general manager's report.
Nothing further than that, Mr. President.
All right, any directors' report? And I will close this meeting until next time.
All right, and I am going to open up the Temecula Public Financing Authority meeting. Please note, we are all still here, absent one council member, Ms. Alexander. Do we have any public comments? No public comments. We have consent calendar. Item number 18, approve resolutions related to the annexation of territory to the Temecula Public Financing Authority Community Facilities District, number 16-01, Roar Paw Ranch Phase 2, and prospective issuance of special tax bonds.
Move approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just regard that, sorry.
All right.
And I move approval again.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, please cast your votes. That passes 4-2-0 with one member absent. Do we have a, an executive director's report this evening?
Nothing tonight.
Any board reports? All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn that meeting and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, moving into public hearing. Item 19, conduct Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TFR, hearing, adopting a resolution approving the issuance of not to exceed $27 million of California Enterprise Development Authority revenue obligations for the benefit of Linfield Christian School. Can we have a staff report, please? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Heidi Arias, and I am the new real estate analyst for the Community Development Department. And so, today before you, I will be presenting Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, also known as TFR. So, before council tonight is a resolution approving the issuance by the California Enterprise Development Authority, also known as CEDA, of revenue obligations for the benefit of Linfield Christian School. I want to make a note here that the city is not issuing any debt, and the city is not responsible for any obligations. I will also reiterate this later in the presentation. The purpose of TFR is to have a public hearing required by IRS Code and to be held before city council prior to revenue obligations or any other debt obligation being issued. The TFR hearing's purpose is to allow interested persons an opportunity to express their views for or against issuance of revenue obligations. Linfield Christian School has requested the issuance of tax-exempt revenue obligations through CEDA. The obligations do not exceed 27 million. The funds are for financing or refinancing the cost of acquisition, development, construction, equipment, and/or furnishings. CEDA, just a little bit of background there, was formed in 2006 to assist for-profit, nonprofit corporations and other entities without obtaining financing for projects that serve public interest. Currently, there's over 200-member jurisdictions. The city has been a member of CEDA since 2019. So, the city's role here is to hold the TFR hearing, and that's what we're doing here tonight, allow CEDA to issue revenue obligations to Linfield Christian School, and to approve the resolution allowing CEDA and Linfield Christian School to issue revenue obligations. Again, the city is not issuing any debt of its own. As an associate member of CEDA, the city is not responsible for any financial or other obligations to CEDA, and the city does not have any responsibility here. So, staff's recommendation is to approve the resolution, to adopt the resolution approving the issuance by CEDA of revenue obligations for the benefit of Linfield Christian School. And I am available for any questions, and so is a representative from Linfield Christian School.
All right, let's start with questions from the council.
Well, I have a point of order, Madam. Mr. City Attorney, since I share a common boundary with Linfield Christian School, I should probably abstain.
Yes, you should also step up.
Right.
All right, get out of here.
It's been nice seeing you all again.
Have a good evening. All right, so, any other questions from council? All right, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comments.
All right, any comments from council? No, I'm going to close that public hearing, that was exciting. All right, any other comments or questions? If a representative from Linfield is here, I wouldn't mind you stepping forward, just tell us, tell us what your plans are.
It is to refinance current debt at a long-term fixed rate, something we've been trying to do for many years, so, very fortunate. Thank you, guys, for your time.
All right, thank you so much for coming out, happy to help you.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes 3-2-0 with one abstention from Mary Ann Edwards and one absence with Ms. Alexander. All right, thank you so much, good luck. All right, moving on, public hearing. Item number 20, consider a negative declaration, general plan amendment, planned development overlay amendment, development plan and tentative track map planning application numbers, PA 20-1323, 1324, 25, and 26. And I believe, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We would ask for concurrence to the city council to extend this item simply by two weeks for appropriate posting on-site, and we'll be back in two weeks and prepared to cover this item with full counsel. Developer has been notified of this, if I'm not mistaken, as well.
All right, any questions from council? Everybody's concurrence, we'll move that forward two weeks.
Actually, you need to open the public hearing and then move to continue.
All right, open public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
Yes.
We do not.
All right, and then, I guess we need a motion to move...
Move to continue for two weeks.
Second.
Do you want us to vote on the system? Please cast your votes. And that passes 4-2-0. Okay, thank you so much. All right, any items for future city council agendas? Not seeing any city manager report.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had a closed session tonight, and at that closed session, the agenda items are listed on the front of the agenda. The council set the fair market value of the property, interest being acquired, and also provided direction to the staff for negotiating an acquisition of those property interests, and no other actions to report.
Okay, and if we would, please, Ms. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Temecula lost a dear friend and colleague several weeks ago, and his memorial service was held today at Rancho Community Church. Rick Schaefer served this community in so many ways, as an active parent, father, husband, grandfather, Little League coach, all the athletics, and he served 17 years on the TVUSD governing board, a school board member, which is not an easy job. And so, I had the pleasure of knowing him for the entire time that he and Sharon and the girls lived here and working with him as a member of the school board. And so, I would just like to adjourn this meeting in the memory of Rick Schaefer.
All right, adjourning the meeting in his memory, and we will see you all in about two weeks. Thank you so much.[1791.74][1791.74](applause)